I will call the January 28th, 2020, regular meeting of the Christiansburg Town Council to order. We will take a moment of reflection followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Thank you. Please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic which we sustain, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I have a couple of adjustments to the agenda. If anybody else has anything to add. Under consent agenda, I would like to add a proclamation in honor of Neil Turner, who is retiring after 42 years of public service in the last 15 or so as the Montgomery County Emergency Services Coordinator. And the other, under the discussion by mayor and council, item B, IT Director Craig Hatmaker will not be here tonight. He's representing the town at funeral of another one of our employees. Do I have a motion to?
Second.
Second.
Motion in a second. Ms. Stipes?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks? Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stikes?
Aye.
As six oh. Would like to take a moment to introduce Reed Broton, who is with Sands Anderson and Associates of our new town legal counsel. And Reed, I believe you have some. We're only being charged for one, so. Throw them out there, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have three other attorneys from our Christiansburg office, Mary Russell, Mike Bedsaw, and Steve Durbin. We're all here. And we just want to thank the council and the town for appointing us. And we're really glad to be here and represent the town.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you so much for being here.
Tonight, we have a public hearing scheduled. Conditional use permit request by Stephen LaPlante, applicant for property owned by Raz LLC for residential use as permitted in the R3 multifamily residential district at 1305 Redford Street Northwest, tax map number 525-2-49B. In the B3 general business district, use permitted in the R3 multifamily residential district include single-family dwellings, two-family dwellings, townhomes, and multifamily dwellings at a density of development of up to 20 units per acre. Property is designated as business commercial in the future land use map of the 2013 Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. Is there anyone here to address this issue tonight? Just may I give you your name and?
Hello, my name is Karen LaPlante. My husband is the one who did the application. He has been called to Texas for work, so I'm here instead. So we reported the planning commission last week and discussed the options for the property. We have bought it as an investment property and had actually hoped for it to be a business because there was business in it prior to it. It was actually a house, originally built as a house and now bed and breakfast has been used for that purpose. We didn't have as much luck with the business. There were several people that were interested. It was a little far out of town for what they were interested in. So we decided we'd like to go back to residential. It is a very large piece of property, so it's over 4,000 square feet. When you count the basement, it has six exits and entrances and has like four bathrooms. So it lives itself very well to be in two apartments, divided up, and has about 90, I think, parking spaces and has a handicap exit. So there could be a handicap apartment as well. So we reported the planning commission and it was approved last week. And you're just here before you turn. I am here before you, he is not.
Thank you, Karen. Any questions? I'm sorry for, I want to say Ms. Hubbard. That's not right. That's way back, right? Okay. Any questions, comments?
I was at the meeting, at the planning meeting. It was a really good meeting. I would like to call into motion that we approve. That's for them, so.
We can do that under discussion later in the meeting if you get a motion in a second to vote on it. What was the, the planning commission was, do you know the vote?
Yes.
Ananamous.
Six oh, thank you. Very good. Counsel, will you entertain a motion to add this to? Should like to put it?
I really like the two-week timeframe between a public hearing and a vote if possible.
Okay.
I feel that gives the citizen enough time to reflect on it and?
Need to review it a little bit?
Yes.
Well, I'll comment on that. I agree because I do remember from, I was, Councilman Shawalter and I both were at that meeting. And one of the outcomes of that meeting was that you were going, the applicant was going to meet with the adjacent property owner and work out an issue with screening. Is that correct? Or am I mistaken?
Sir, that's not the way that I understood it. We were discussing the issue where there was a fence there. There's already four foot street fence and the adjacent property owner had some concerns perhaps, but didn't even realize there was a fence there already. So we did discuss all of that options.
Okay.
And the other property owner was told to be here tonight if they did have concerns.
Okay.
It was actually his son. And it was requested that the parents show up at the public hearing if they?
Okay.
If that was an issue. And they were out of town, I believe.
I stand corrected. No, thank you.
But for me personally, I would like to wait the two weeks public hearing tonight and wait our standard two weeks. Not that I think anybody's going to come in, other than the adjacent property owners, maybe. But tonight's their public hearing on this particular parcel. But several times over the past couple of years, we have pushed things through. And I'd like to get back to a two-week period for our public hearings to give people opportunity to can't make it tonight, another two weeks. Even though I don't anticipate anything on this.
Same.
I agree because before we have pushed, I just think another two weeks unless it's an emergency, it's not going to hurt us, I don't think it's going to hurt you.
Sir, it's not. I would say that there was notice of one meeting that canceled for the planning mission, no one paying the organization. And there was the one person in the last one. But it certainly does not matter to wait two more weeks.
All right. Because before we have, to me, we kind of push things. Send the citizens opportunity to bring information back to us. So I'd like to wait for two weeks.
Steve, you concur? Okay. So we will delay that until the next meeting.
That sounds good.
Beyond the discussion. Under the consent, oh, is there anyone else to address this matter? I'm sorry. Hearing number one, I will close the public comments of public hearing. We move to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is the approval of the minutes of January 14th, 2020, approval of amendments to the Professional Engineering Service Project contract with McDonough Boylan Peck Incorporated in the amount of $47,950 for additional construction engineering and inspection services for primary extension and annual paving project. Renewal agreement of the city of, with the city of Radford use of the Christiansburg Aquatic Center. Scheduled a public hearing on March 20th, March 10th, 2020 for a conditional use permit request by Cole Show's Amusement Company Incorporated is the applicant for property owned at, by Rockstep Christiansburg LLC for carnival at 782 New River Road Northwest, tax map 435A-41. In the B3 general business district, the property is designated as business commercial, future land use map of the 2013 Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. And the third, and the final one is asking a resolution honoring Neil Turner for his service.
I'll make a motion.
You'll second? Got a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop? Councilwoman Hicks? Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stikes?
Aye.
Will be six oh, thank you. Introductions and presentations. Introduction of new employees. Police Department introducing, introduced by Police Chief Mark Sissick. Mark?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to thank you first of all for allowing us to do this. I think it's a very important process. I think it's important for our citizenry to lead our new police officers. And I think it's important for our police officers to know they're elected officials. I often tell the story about being on the job for five years and not knowing the mayor or the city council or town council members. So that's the reason I think it's very important. As they're walking forward, I would also like to thank town council for their support of our law enforcement organization and for their whole service to our community. The four agency members before you this evening are a result of our intensive recruitment effort. I will tell you that recruiting law enforcement officers in today's society is becoming much tougher, tougher every day. It's very tough to find individuals, one, that are willing to do the job, and two, that have the moral compass to do this job and to serve in this profession. At this time, I would like to introduce from councils left to right first is Olivia Dunn. Olivia was born in Petersburg, Virginia and graduated from Randolph Henry High School. She received her associate's degree from Southside Virginia Community College and then her bachelor's of science from Radford University. Olivia graduated from our police academy in October of 2019 and is currently finalized in our field training program. Second, you have Nathaniel Jennings, who was born in Roanoke, Virginia, graduated from Craig Cowling. He entered the United States Marine Corps after high school where he was assigned as an infantry squad leader. He graduated our police academy in May of 2019 and has completed our field training program. Nathaniel lives with his girlfriend and they're expecting their first child in April. Kayla Stoltz is assigned to our patrol division, was born in Radford, Virginia, graduated from Kielaske County High School. She has her bachelor's degree from Liberty University in criminal psychology. She served as a police officer with the Radford City Police Department for six years and then as a lieutenant with the Kielaske County Sheriff's Office before being hired by Christiansburg. Next is Carrie Palmer. Carrie was born in Chicago, Illinois and was homeschooled K through 12th grade. His previous employment includes time as a painter with his family business and seven years as a United States Marine. Carrie is married to Chloe Palmer. They have a one-year-old daughter and another child on the way. So the oath of office, the oath of honor that's being taken tonight that I'm speaking to the four officers that stand before you, is expected that you abide by this oath. Law enforcement professionals are held to a higher standard and we absolutely should be. By taking this oath, you are committing to this government body and every citizen of the town of Christiansburg ensure integrity nor your character will ever be compromised. At this point, at this time, if you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. On my honor?
On my honor.
I will never betray my badge.
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity?
My integrity.
My character?
My character.
Or the public trust?
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage?
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself and others?
To hold myself and others.
Accountable for our actions.
Accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution?
I will always uphold the Constitution.
And the community I serve?
And the community I serve.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Next out of Public Works, John Carter. You've got someone to introduce to us?
Yes, sir. I have two individuals. Proud to introduce them to you.
Okay.
First one here is Dante Robertson. He's a native of Nara's in Ridge Creek. He's been in the construction field over 30-plus years and we're happy to have him down in Public Works. The next gentleman is Curtis Williams. He's a native of Giles County. And when he's not working for us, he likes hunting, fishing, outdoors, and spending time with his two kids.
Very good, thank you. Welcome aboard. Grant Hoover?
Good evening. Tonight, I'd like to introduce two of the newest members of Public Works, both of which work for the Streets Department. I'd like to first introduce Cody Mounts, who works for the Street Division. Cody is from Rodney, Virginia. He went to high school in Bassett, Virginia. He recently worked at Volvo as a mechanic and other maintenance related skills. In his free time, Cody enjoys spending time with his three children, hunting and fishing.
Hi, welcome aboard, Cody.
The second employee I'd like to introduce is Chance Dooley. Chance works on our stormwater department. Chance is originally from Blacksburg, employed area. He went to high school in Floyd. He worked in the mining industry before he came to work with us. And when he's not at work, he enjoys spending time with his two daughters, fishing and swimming.
Very good. Welcome aboard. Thank you. K W Bishop?
Good evening.
Evening.
I'm here to introduce David Dalton. He's come to work for us, the Voice Lord Richmond Plant. His previous employer was Norfolk Southern from Roanoke for 10 years. And he enjoys camping, fishing, hiking, and farming for his hobbies.
Very good. All right, welcome aboard. Thank you. Next is our citizens' comments section, where citizens have issues or would like to bring before council. You need to approach the microphone with your name and address, and you have three minutes. Anyone here to address council?
First of all, turning to seven. I'm here to address mainly Mayor Barber and his actions in the last town council meeting where he appointed the town council board. The newest town council member, John Hicks, did not receive one of the town council committees. Now, I'll point out that when Councilwoman Sacks was elected, her very first day in office when they were appointed, she received the Central Business District Committee and the Stormwater and Trash and Sewer Committee, which she had expressed an interest in. As I understand, I had spoken with Councilwoman Hicks yesterday and asked, and she had expressed interest in the Central Business District Committee as well. That was given to Councilwoman Sacks because she was the only business owner, local small business owner on council. And the stormwater was because she had run about the stormwater fees being paid by business. But Councilwoman Sacks got zero. To me, that seems rather odd. And I asked her, and she said, my Q, said that she needed a year's experience. Did require that from Councilwoman Sacks, the last person elected. And Councilwoman Hicks received the most votes of all the council people elected this cycle. I really do think that it's unfair to not give her the committee that she had asked for as a business owner. And as a business owner, she would be the perfect person to be on since it is supposed to be for the business owners of the town of Christiansburg to look out for their interests of all businesses.
Thank you, Mr. Waltz.
Hello. My name is Vanetta Moore Williams. Address? Address 740 Lester Street over here in Christiansburg. I just have an issue. Last Wednesday, I came to pay my water bill. And I needed to, and I was at the door before 8:00 o'clock. And then they had to open the doors. So I'm running up the steps. I want to pay my bill because if not, it's going to be disconnected. I get to the lady, she tells me how much I owe and I know that it's more than what it was supposed to be. And she said, well, you have to pay a $25 reconnection fee. That would have been fine, except my water hadn't been disconnected. But yeah, I still had to pay the $25 fee. And I would have been fine with that had the services been rendered. But I had to pay for something that never happened. So I just feel like that was an issue with me because $25, I mean, it might not go away for y'all, but in my household, $25 can feed my kids for about two days. So I would, I just feel like we need to address that issue. Maybe something can be done. I mean, if services aren't rendered, I don't think we should have to pay. It's just, it has just bothered me very bad.
Thank you. We'll look into it.
Thank you so much.
Hi there. I'd like to just lay this out for the council members. Let them take a look at this. And also, I got a handout. This is something new. I'm Jeff Akers. I've been a citizen here for 49 years.
What's your address? I bet you live?
345 Howery Street, Christiansburg. Today, I saw a town officer throw this out onto the road and drive off, no lights on, no siren on, at the corner of Fatback Soul Shack. Now, the item that was handed out shows you a price of just what I looked up just in the meantime of about 5:00 o'clock and this meeting. That shows about $900 of waste that I hope our chief of police trains these officers a little bit better instead of throwing $900 out on the roadside. Not to mention the money, but what if a kid would have stepped on that? That's my biggest concern. It's the first time I've ever been here. And somebody needs to go back and look at the training log and maybe tell this officer, show him how to do his job a little bit better.
Do you mind sharing with us what that exactly is?
What is it?
Because I just see a box from this thing.
It's a nail strip.
Spike strips?
It took me six seconds to put it back in the case. And I mean, I'm driving out to do something else and I see the officer go just like this and throw it right over in the ditch. It's pretty drastic to see an officer who, even if it's broken or whatever, they should be at least picking it up and putting it in the trash, setting examples, not throwing stuff down.
You sure that was a Christiansburg police officer?
Yes, sir, I am. I'm 100%.
Okay.
I think it's got a number on the front of that that you can probably look at the log and find out what vehicle it goes to.
Chief, can you tell?
Chief, can you, can you address this to us?
I've been out here, I don't even know what it is.
It's a spike, it's a spike strip. Down around Fatback?
Can you repeat? Maybe can repeat his comments where the chief is here.
Yeah, I'm just driving by, going to do some errands today. And I see one of your officers, which I hope you train your officers better than what that officer was trained. He took the nail strip, threw it right over in the ditch. Whole box, everything, everything's there. Took me five seconds, stop, pick it up, put it all back in the case for you. That's a $900 investment. I hope we don't do, when we have to pull that thing out, I hope we don't have to spend another $900 and every officer is doing that. Yeah. Counsel, I don't know the details of that, but definitely I'll look into it. I know we had a pursuit today. They came into our jurisdiction, so I'll report to council on that. I'll also add to that, when he did drive off, no lights on, no siren. There were two officers sitting there. And the second officer did his job. He cut his lights on wherever he was going. The first one did not. I'll follow up on that.
Thank you. If you'll report back to us.
Was this on 460 business?
On Roanoke Street?
No, I'm Roanoke.
Okay.
Right there where the interstate comes off and right in front of Fatback Soul Shack.
Okay. We'll look into it. Thank you. So I guess we can have that back?
For $900? And taxes for me this year, right?
Anyone else to address council? Hearing number one, I will close the citizens' comments section. Committee reports. We have a report from the Street Committee tonight. Mr. Stipes, Mr. Bishop?
Mr. Warren's going to bring up the plat that the Street Committee reviewed. The plat is at the end of Justin Lane, which is a cul-de-sac adjacent to Tractor Supply Company, an older subdivision. And what's going on here is there are three older lots. Andrew, you might run your hand, or run your hand just around the three. There's a lot line there that's being vacated and another lot line there that's being vacated. And the third lot sort of looks like a harpoon. It comes down into the triangle there. And the applicant is going to finish out the subdivision and is requesting that these three lots be condensed to two lots there. You can show where the new lot line is, Andrew. The new lot line is there. And they're going to, he wants to construct a duplex on that lot, which the town staff has reviewed. There's also an easement, an existing easement. See the hatching right there? That's also from the old subdivision. It's a dedicated use easement for utilities and drainage. It's not, never been used. And actually, there was a power line installed. They want, the request also is to vacate that easement and rededicate it along the, Andrew, run your hand, yeah, right there. The easement's going to be located further to the rear of the two properties. And there's already a power line in that. So there was an electric, it was a power line installed outside of an easement years and years ago. So this is sort of tidying up those lots to accommodate the duplex. And it also requires council action to vacate the easement and relocate it. The engineering department has reviewed it and has no reservations about approving it. And the Street Committee's recommendation is to approve the plat as presented. And that recommendation is presented in the form of a motion.
One second.
A motion in a second. Any discussion or questions or comments? All right. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stikes?
Aye.
Six oh, thank you very much.
That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
All righty. Discussion in action by mayor and council, the monthly bill list.
Can we go back a little bit? Excuse me, for committee reports?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay.
Committee, we'll start with you, Ms. Sacks.
All righty. Okay, the Stormwater and Recycle Committee were currently in the process, excuse me, of reviewing the stormwater runoff fee structure. And also, I wanted to give a thanks to Bowling Media. They stepped up and did some complimentary videos for the Montgomery Regional Solid Waste Authority. And they're on YouTube right now. So you have them showing how to recycle better. And it's a wonderful video. They involve some of children in the area, which is just adorable. Central Business meets tomorrow at noon. Everybody's welcome. And that's it for committee at this time. Thanks.
Good. Ms. Hubbard, anything from Aquatics?
Yes, I would like to say, every year about this time, I say something concerning the Christiansburg Aquatic Center. And, you know, sometimes people talk about money concerning the Aquatic Center, and which is right. But I think there's so much more to think about when you think about the Aquatic Center and what it does for the people of Christiansburg and what it does for the quality of life. And I know that I go to the pool probably twice a week and I always see so much going on there. Some retired people, some elderly people, some kids. It takes care of everybody in the community, really. And it really is a tremendous asset for the town of Christiansburg and for the quality of life. And I just like to say that every once in a while. And I think everybody knows that we have the Lions Club, I believe, provides three lessons to every second grade student in the town of Christiansburg, in Montgomery County. And they come three times and it's divided up into parts where they, they have a swim lesson and they have, they get some health safety and then they get to play for a while. And they do that, and somebody was telling me the other day, they said, this year, the middle school swim team is larger than ever. Just, and they think it's because of the second grade program. the second grade program. So I just want us always to, to keep thinking about this, that you can't measure everything in dollars and cents. You have to sometimes do and think about what this does for, for the people of this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stipes?
No reports. Thanks, mayor.
Mr. Showalter?
I've got a request for the Central Business. If, tomorrow, if you could discuss maybe going every other flag with the CI flag, uh, for February, since that's, uh, Black History Month. I think that would be, um, something just, I would like to see. Every other flag doesn't have to be everyone, but...
Great idea.
Kind of mix it up a little bit, if you guys would discuss that. And I just want to mention, there's nothing from, um, Marissa actually mentioned it from our committee. We're gonna take another look at the stormwater fee, and we try to do, look at really any fee with the town within probably three to five years, once that we instituted. It's definitely that time to review this and see, and see, um, find out a little bit more about it and see, and see what we could, uh, hopefully do to, um, ease the burden a little bit for our businesses and citizens. But I just wanted to mention the, um, I attended the RACE Summit, which was the first time this year. It happens twice a year. It's open to all citizens. I only spent a portion of my Saturday. I do want to thank our town manager, Randy, uh, for attending, and there was a, a lot of community leaders out there. Um, again, it's a portion of your Saturday. The next summit meeting will be in August. August. So it's open to our public, and it was very educational. There was a lot of data passed around this year, and you learn a lot, and you, you get to do breakout sessions, and something I personally really enjoyed. I know that, uh, council, other council members have attended in the past or, or this past Saturday. But it's something, you know, I think that the community can get involved in. It was a good turnout.
It was.
But I do appreciate it.
It was a good event, great event.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Bishop?
I don't have a...
Ms. Hicks?
I'm good.
Thank you very much. Monthly bill list, under discussion.
Open for discussion, or do you need a motion?
Uh, yep. So I need a motion, and then we can discuss.
Okay. I, uh, I still move to approve the monthly bills.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Yes. Um, I'd like to thank the town for making the change in the procurement policy. I have noticed a difference. There are some purchases that are now being made in Christiansburg or Montgomery County, um, instead of going outside of our area. So that is a huge hurdle for us to overcome, and I just wanted to say thank you for the support on that.
Any other comments or questions?
I do think, uh, I would like to maybe take a look again and see if we can raise up that amount of, instead of coming to town council for the $1,500, raise it up back to $5,000 for the departments. I think it's affecting them. Uh, personally, it's taking a lot of hours out of their time to be able to serve us in other things, and trying to get, you know, all these quotes and things like that. I know they are still working, uh, towards providing more services, uh, to the community with local vendors.
Okay. Yeah, that's, I think, that's, we can, we can look at.
Current, I guess the former policy had a threshold of $5,000, and, uh, we changed that recently to $1,500. It has created a little bit of a, I guess, purchasing issue for our purchasing. It's like a kind of a, a little bit of a blunt paperwork because the threshold's been lowered. Also, I do think it's actually maybe a little bit of an encumbrance for buying local because now your threshold for what you have to get through quotes for is lowered from the 5,000 to the 1,500. So it's, you know, buying local and getting the best price are sometimes competing interest. And, uh, basically, the lower you have the threshold, yes, the better price you're getting because you're getting more quotes, but it does, like I say, limit buying local a little bit.
Well, that's, uh, we've got the retreat coming. That's certainly a topic for discussion, for consideration.
Randy, you mentioned this before, actually, a couple weeks ago, and it was, when we're going through plan commission, Mr. Stipes, you can sort of refresh my memory on this, and, Marissa, I'm not sure if you were there. It was recommended to go down to the 1,500, correct?
Actually, we recommended going to 10,000, which was the new, new state limit.
Okay, going up to 10,000?
Correct.
But you're saying 5,000?
The former, the former state threshold was 5,000, and that was our previous threshold. Just past year, the state ran, raised the threshold to 10,000, and staff had recommended raising it to 10,000. But that, basically, that finance committee meeting, it's decided to lower it to 1,500.
Okay.
And again, I think it was in the interest of getting the best price by getting through quotes.
Right. So instead of going, I know we're gonna have a discussion later, but for everybody here, why don't we just go to 10,000?
That's the wish of the council.
Because if we go to 5, and then six months later, it's still a burden to staff. Uh, you know, it gives you time to reach out to your staff, see what they're ordering, how much they're ordering, to see if going to 10,000, uh, would be a smarter idea, instead of continually changing it every few months until we get there.
Okay. Is that consensus account?
Is that a motion? Or just a general consensus?
It seems like we follow the state in most everything else. I don't see why this should not be different.
State mandates, certain things we can.
I do have a comment related to that, if we're discussing it. One of the reasons that it was important for me to see it lowered is because small businesses fall into that area. So if you make it 10,000 before we need to go get a bid or, or quotes, then you're cutting out all of your small businesses, because it's very rare that they're going to need something purchased locally from $10,000 and up.
I think it all depends. Uh, there were, like, some examples that I saw this week, as far as cabinets and things like that, that we could have gotten cheaper, um, because it was actually cheaper to even try to go local and stuff, but still, not, um, not enough where it was, it was over $1,500 for sure, but it was, you know, under $10,000.
I invite, we leave it to Randy and his department heads to talk about it and then bring your recommendation back to us, even if we need to vote on it. Next, council. Is that fair enough?
That's fine.
Is that plenty of time, or not enough time, or?
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
So do we ever vote on the bills?
Not yet. Not yet.
Not yet, okay. Got a motion in a second to vote the bills, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Uh.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hopper?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Uh, shared agreement for use of public, uh, public use of courtyard area at 100 West Main Street between the town of Christiansburg and On Main Street Incorporated.
Let you know, I guess, a few of the things that came out of the rally group meeting last night. It was suggested that we extend the hours, holiday agreement, that basically make all the hours public hours, and that the On Main Street hours basically be, um, by reservation by contacting me. So that's one change we plan on making, and that's recommendation from the rally group. They did request a little more time to have more input into it, and I guess see if there's anything else they would want included as we go along. Uh, they, basically, the grant isn't, isn't as pressing as I thought it was. Of course, it's on here for general discussion, if you'd want to move forward. Um, there is no money coming from the town in this agreement. Uh, just specify that, this is simply for the $3,000 rally grant that we're considering basically allowing, uh, to go to On Main Street, Inc.
Is this, I'm sorry, go ahead, John. Is this something that we can put into motion today, to, to just make it go along faster, or?
Well, the group did want a little more time, like I say, into the agreement, and I might bring it to Central Business District Committee tomorrow for their input, too.
You know, I was there last night, and I was, I was very impressed with about 20 people there, and the, how important they felt the little park was gonna be, and I think it's gonna be a great addition to the town, and we really don't have anything like that. And when we're having other festivities and things like that, the park, I think, would be a nice, nice little side event there that will really be a, a plus for the town.
If you do have any major heartburn with this, uh, if you could maybe let me know about it, though. Uh, like I say, it's simply, I guess it is increasing the town's liability a little bit, because basically we're making that a public area on private property, but as far as an effect on our insurance, you know, it won't really have an effect insurance-wise. Technically, I guess it destroys our liability maybe a little bit during those hours, if we're saying it's a public space.
My understanding wrong, but I thought in the contract, you had said that they were to provide insurance.
They would have to maintain their own insurance under the policy. I would make our own insurance aware of it, though.
Okay.
Okay. So are we in a table mode on this thing until the, until the committees got that?
That, and if you have any input into it, and you got it, reach out to you. Yes.
Gotcha.
Okay. Very good.
Can you share with us, Randy, the updated version?
Yeah.
Mine still has the minimum hours, which was my only question.
Like I say, naturally, it was a suggestion last night.
Yeah. Okay.
Is, is this the updated one that we sent?
The one in the packets, the, the previous agreement.
Okay. We'll get it, we'll have it, we'll send it out, council.
I will change in some of the words, so...
Okay. Sounds good. Staff reports, uh, town manager?
Had a request from the fire department for a budget modification. It's not enough to be a budget amendment, but they want to basically shift in their internal budget, uh, money from a, I guess, building remodeling project that was scheduled later this year to $48,000 to their driveway work. The reason they want to do it is, I guess, two reasons. They were planning on doing the driveway work in two phases. Uh, they, they think by doing it in one phase, they can have a cost savings, and also less disruption by doing it this way, and that's the reason the request for the budget change. Val and I can approve $10,000 line item transfer, but because of the, the fact that it's capital, I'd need council's blessing to be able to do it.
It is already budgeted in one way, shape, or form, it's just a shift.
It's just a shift within the budget. For that reason, it's not really considered a budget amendment. We don't have to advertise it as a budget amendment. But I do need council's blessing to be able to do it. Southside, mine, Val's authority to do it.
And I did go by the fire, um, and by the fire station this week and everything else, and that was well explained, where it does make sense to do it all at once.
Sure.
And that's your recommendation?
Yes, it is.
I'll make a motion, will you approve the request?
Okay.
Got a motion in a second. Uh, Mr. Hopper? Any other discussion or questions? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Uh.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hopper?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Mr. Stipes, thank you very much.
Well, bringing up the aquatic center digital sign, Terry's had a point now that she would like to put that out to RFP. Of course, the digital sign, any digital sign that the town's proposed is always kind of a fairly debated subject by council. So before we put out the RFP for a digital sign at the aquatic center, it was budgeted this past year. What council's blessing, and also maybe a little input into what size you think would be appropriate for that location.
Okay.
You're asking us, what's this?
Yes. And do, do you have any heartburn with the proceeding with the digital sign? Like I say, it's been, it's been pretty debated in the past.
It was budgeted in, uh, last year's budget, and it's been debated over and over for years.
I think, I mean, I think it's time, because it's not just going to advertise the aquatic center by itself. I'm under the assumption we're gonna be able to expand some other events going on on there.
For small feet.
My goodness gracious, are we just...
Have you seen any leads for this signs?
We, we haven't advertised it yet. That, that's what we would be proceeding to do if, if council's...
Because I know the budget was pretty high. Wasn't it like 58?
I think it's about 60.
60,000?
$60,000, yeah, it's pretty high.
I, I do have a question. Will it go in the same place as the other sign?
Well, that is the, the topic right now. Would council like it in the same place, or you can move it back up? Am I correct, Randy, move it back up? I think that's kind of the question that we have to...
I think the thought was to put it in that location.
The thing I would mention is, it's very hard to see cars coming when you're pulling in or when you're pulling out. I'd like to see, you know, if, if either it moved or it up to where you can see through and see who's coming.
Can I do it through with that?
I'd like to say that, um, I'm sure that you've exercised poor judgment outside of my knowledge, but, uh, Ms. Caldwell has run that department, and the aquatic advisory committee has just been, you know, doesn't, everything that's come out of there, as far as I can tell over the years, has been positive, and I would like to leave it to their purview to do that with any concerns that we would have, but let, put that in their hands to make those decisions would be my, that's my opinion. And if there's any safety, you know, these other things you're listening to, but, uh, Ms. Caldwell and her group should have full sway with that, is my recommendation.
Do we also have to ask beta as far as?
No.
I think it's hard, Terry, to offer a size. You know, if there's any way it could be estimated, which most sign companies can do, like from a street view, how big is it? So you can make sure it's, it's nice and visible, you know? So if that could be done, that would be very helpful.
Yeah, the size is important. The feedback I'm getting is that it really will have to have a fairly major impact for people to see it, but there's several opportunities. We can keep the sign that we currently have and put a digital above it. We could raise the sign we currently have and put the digital below it. We could take the sign that's currently there and move it up to the end of Mill Lane on the Triangle Spot that's currently owned by the town and keep the digital down. There's so many opportunities, so, um, you know, I will address it further with the advisory board and get a few ideas and...
Very good.
Exactly what they would like to see. But I wanted to make sure that you had the input, you know, so that when you see it for the rest of the years, you'll, you'll enjoy it. That's the most important.
Randy, I tell you, over the years, I've been the big one who's fought these digital signs, but, I mean, they're everywhere now, you know? If I, if you remember, Mayor, uh, five years ago, I said, I don't want Christiansburg to look like Las Vegas. And I, but I, you know, I just, I'm, I'm defeated, and I think it will be a nice, you know? I think it will be a nice...
Thank you. Anything else?
Yes. Give you some sad news. Casey Jenkins has turned his resignation as special events coordinator. He's going to down for Town, uh, Blacksburg, Inc., to be their executive director. Uh, also, let you know, you hired Alicia Dolls as human resources director, she's coming from Radford University. Uh, let you know, I'm working on a retreat, uh, presentation scheduled with Kevin. We've got a meeting this Thursday, and I'll let you know Friday, I guess, as far as timing and things like that, give you a schedule. Um, flow control ordinance, we've got a public hearing coming up, the second meeting in February. If you'd like a presentation from Montgomery Regional Solid Waste Authority, Alan Cummings and Paul Jefferson, you'd be glad to come and get it. Uh, if you'd like to have a work session on the subject sometime in February, you'd be glad to try to schedule that, whichever direction you'd prefer. to try to schedule that, whichever direction you prefer.
Did you, yeah, did you all get the email that Alan Cummins sent out today that, kind of a nutshell synopsis of what they offer and the difference in what's been, what's been proposed, what's been said, what's been read into the matter? So, I mean, if you would like to have a work session on it, we can certainly do that, or we can, we can go along and then, we're going to have a, we'll have a public hearing on that, the second, for T G of the month. We will not take action on it.
Twenty-fifth.
We will not take action on it until the first meeting in, in March. You just have to study. And at that point, we can probably, if we, I would think if we decide we need any type of work session on it, we could, we could schedule it between.
Public hearing first, and then schedule afterwards.
Let's see what we've got. Okay.
I would like to have a work session on that. It's a lot to it.
Yeah, there really is.
Which would include our attorneys as well, as the solid waste.
One attorney, not five.
Sorry. They're all here.
Get four for the price of one.
That's right.
For tonight, only.
I don't know, they can keep coming, as long as they charge us for one, that's, we're good.
All right. Anything else, Randy?
Just letting you know, emailed you the engagement agreement with the attorneys. I'll just await your direction on that.
We'll discuss that in, so what we're going to, one of the things we'll discuss in closed session, if it comes to a discussion, okay? Very good. Broughton, you hadn't been here long enough to make any comments, but I'm going to open it up to you just in case.
I have no comments at this time.
Thank you. Any other staff to report? Hearing none. Any additional town council reports, and what we've done in committee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Stipes?
Oh, you've got some? Yes. I was just giving an update. Let's see, I have a little bit of a list, so bear with me. I attended my first meeting for the Greater Montgomery Liaison Group, and it was fabulous. It's a great group of people who get together in the area and collaborate to help each other, so I appreciate attending that. McKeepe had their second ribbon cutting for their second location on Roanoke Street, and in case anybody doesn't know, they have a wonderful computer center where a gentleman donates all of his time to repair and build and take pieces and parts, and for a very nominal fee, and all of that money is donated back to McKeepe. So I thought that was a little bit of a gem that maybe not everybody knew about. And then also, this Sunday, this last Sunday, Good Shepherd Baptist Church, they organized a community get-together for Wade's Grocery Store to appreciate them being in the community for 69 years. And then there's a legislative day coming up in Richmond on February 6th that I do hope to attend and bring issues to our delegates and also Northam. Thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Hopper?
No.
You all right?
Yeah, we're all right. Steve down there, right?
Get on it, you're all right.
Mr. Stipes?
Yeah, I have two quick things. I'm glad Mr. Lansonese is here this evening. This is addressed to our citizens instead of addressing council, but if you, if this Christiansburg community has not noticed, our Public Works Department has made some adjustments to their trash collection over holiday periods, and it's made a huge difference. And this has to do with extended holiday periods such as Christmas and Thanksgiving, when you have back-to-back holidays, and if you've been around long enough, you realize that at Thanksgiving, if you're a Thursday pickup, you're waiting until the next Tuesday to get your pickup. But Mr. Lansonese and his department have changed their, have changed it up, and now those longer holidays, for instance, at Thanksgiving, I think the Wednesday pickup was done on Monday or Tuesday, but they split it up to where you're not waiting almost a week, because some of those holidays, you'd wait almost a week. I'm seeing some head nodding, but it's a subtle difference, and it was something that the Public Works Department did to make our, increase our quality of life, especially on those extended period holidays. So I want to thank him and his staff for doing that. And then Ms. Caldwell, again, I used poor words before to say, I'm sure you've exercised poor judgment outside of my knowledge. Maybe you haven't, but you, your diligence in tracking some of the questions that were raised about how we're collecting fees from, in this case, the city of Bradford, I was very, very pleased to see how you're tracking that, and actually, the numbers. And so you are a, you are a very good steward of your budget, and our decisions as council, and I wanted to say thank you for your responsible stewardship of our program. Thank you.
Mr. Sherwood?
Nothing.
Mr. Bishop?
I don't have any.
Ms. Hicks? Okay.
Well, you know what? I want to find out what is this going on in February? I'm sorry, the meeting you're going to, up to Richmond?
It's a legislative day. It's in the council emails. It was sent to everybody, all the details.
I just started getting those emails back. I was locked out.
Got you. You can go visit with the legislature and bring your ideas from local government up to Richmond, so that's what I plan to do.
So is that something that if two or more town council members we were to go, is that something we need to have in the agenda or anything like that, or?
It'd have to be three or four council members.
Yeah, but I was saying if two or more people, so I.
We're going that there could be a meeting. Yeah, we'd have to disclose that, if several of us went, because there could be a chance.
Could be.
Not on my side of things. Marissa's got a, I think you have an appointment with?
With Nick Rush at present.
With Nick Rush, specifically talk about some items.
Yeah, there's a sales tax issue that he's working on, and it should impact everybody in the whole state, so I'm very excited that he's making movement on it.
Hmm. We got a couple of looks, unless we're getting our going, it's closed session, other business.
Ready? Anything else? If you.
Are you finished?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
I'll have to see that notice from V M L on legislative day, make sure, see if I can find it. Randy, do you have it?
Yes.
Can you shoot it back out now that she's able to crack the hidden code and get into the council staff?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. Anyone else other than, I know Melissa's going, anyone else that definitely know they are going to go? So if you go, there's only two, so we're, I think we're, we're pretty good shape.
Feel free to report back.
Oh, yes.
Oh, I will. Yeah, absolutely.
All righty. Ms. Sacks?
I move that the town council enter into a closed meeting as stipulated in the agenda, Section 2.2-3711A1, for the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. The closed meeting is for discussion of personnel, specifically the appointment of officers for the year 2020. Do you want me to read the second one as well?
I do have a comment about that really quick. I'm sorry. I know we had a closed meeting the last time, and I know some of the information that was in the closed meeting, that was supposed to be a closed meeting, because of that reason, was went outside the meeting by someone here, so that's all I wanted to make was that comment. Thank you.
Okay.
Do you have any more detail on that? I mean.
Yes, some of the information that was said by me during the closed meeting was given to somebody we're supposed to, retired or whatever.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Probably address that in the closed session also.
Okay. The second one, same code, and it is for, oh, A7, I'm sorry, 2-2-3711A7, for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing and open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purposes of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened on or which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be commenced or by against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. The closed meeting is for discussion of specific pending litigation by Gilde Enterprises Incorporated and D. Stephen Haga Jr.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, discussion. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hopper?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Sherwood?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
This is six oh. We'll take about a three, four-minute break, and I will, at the end, when we come out of closed session and finish, we will get other business before we adjourn.
Hey, Jeff, what time? Jeff, I agree.
Yes.
I move to certify that the town council of the town of Christiansburg, having met in closed session, in the best of each member's knowledge, discussed only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, and only such matters as are identified in the resolution to enter into closed meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion in a second, discussion. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hopper?